Well, I'll call our meeting to order. First item is roll call. Diane?
Mayor Skook?
President?
Vice Mayor Nye?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Grossman?
I'm here.
Councilmember Mallory?
Yes.
Councilmember Rooney?
Here.
And I don't see Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting is present. We have a quorum here.
Thank you, Diane. I think it's all of us. Welcome, everyone. Tonight, we have a special one called Presentation Chamber of Commerce Award. Who's going to do that?
I'll.
Gloria? Would you use the microphone for, so we can...
Actually, it's from the Prescott Valley Early Bird Lions Club.
There you go.
It's from the Prescott Valley Early Bird Lions Club. We want to present you with first place civic nonprofit group for the float that you guys did and being on the float. It's a real pretty award.
Oh, look at that.
Woo-hoo!
Exciting!
I'm not sure how this sets up here. Either like that. Okay. Okay, and one more award.
And then, Mr. Mayor and Council. First time ever, we've had a chairman's trophy for the best overall entry in our parade this year, and to celebrate that, it was a unanimous decision to give this award to the Prescott Valley Town Council and the Rec Department.
Oh, look at that!
Made sure that it honored the ruby slipper. Look, it's all red. Yes.
Wow, that's cool.
Yeah, why don't you guys come on now? Come on.
Come get this picture. The whole council?
Yes.
Sure! You were all on the float!
I think that's a good idea.
That's okay.
Where's your costume? Where is your costume?
Wow, I just repaired my costume today.
For the next event. Oh, my gosh. Oh, my gosh. Mr. Mayor, come up here and hold this, sir. You're still our fearless leader.
Can you hold this too?
Yes!
Talker's over here.
How many lions does it take?
I don't know where you're gonna put that.
Hey, thank you. Problem.
Mayor? Mayor? We really should tell everybody that it, all we did was right on the float.
Yes.
You know, there were a lot of staff people in the town that really did a lot of work building that, so the credit really goes to them, so...
Rick, you are so humble.
Thank you.
Well, thank you all, and have a good one. Okay, we go on into number four. Presentation. Pronghorn Ranch subdivision floodplain. Boyd, you are up.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, let me see if I can get this PowerPoint set up, and then we'll get started.
Now, the mayor and council, I did just, while Boyd is working on booting this thing up, you had some individuals that spoke during call to the public at the last council meeting, and I asked Boyd to come in and explain what does exist, what's going to be built, and to bring you up to date on that because it's important that you hear and see something other than what was represented at our last council meeting.
Thank you. First slide I have here is something we put together this week that basically shows you the overall drainage area that encompasses both the Viewpoint and Pronghorn subdivisions, and then carries on out into Lonesome Valley. The actual blue up there on the very top, that ties into Granite Creek about five miles north of this exhibit, just to give you an idea of how big this watershed is. The red line is the dividing line between the Aguafria watershed and the Verde Valley watershed. The green line is basically the limits of the drainage area that encompasses the area of Pronghorn that is in question, and then the orange is just some other of the basic drainage basins that drain into this main channel of Lonesome Valley Wash. And the one up on your top right, I didn't take that all the way to the limits to show you that basin because it's basically all the way to the top of Mingus. Just to give you an idea of how large that drainage basin is that we're talking about. Next slide is a more specific area closer to what we're discussing. The two red areas are actual detention basins. The top one was put in as part of Pronghorn Unit 13, which was designed by Kellywise Engineering in 2004, constructed in 2005. The lower one, right off of Antelope Meadows Drive, was a part of Pronghorn Unit 16, which is basically all that area just to the north where you see the diagonal line is the gas line, all of it just northeast of there is Pronghorn Unit 16, and that was designed by ACE Engineering in 2015 and has been built over the last couple of years. The last step for completion of that channel is hydroseeding, which they are out pulling weeds and tilling that up. My understanding from the developer and the HOA is that they will have that done by the end of this month, so we'll actually get some vegetation growing in that channel, which will help with the aesthetics of it.
And Boyd, when there are representations made to council that Pronghorn Ranch construction has caused water to go across properties to the north of that boundary for the first time, would you say that that might be hard to believe seeing that that is a designated FEMA floodplain?
Yes. The whole blue area is one of the legs of the tributary to Lonesome Valley Wash. That has been in place for as long as I've been here, which is almost 11 years now. I don't know how long that floodplain has been in place. It's been adjusted by FEMA over the years, but it's basically stayed in place. So that is an incorrect assessment that those properties to the east are flooded now because of work that was done in Pronghorn. That floodplain existed out there prior to the Pronghorn development even starting construction. Next brief slide that I presented here is the actual Pronghorn Ranch Unit 13 drainage report that addressed the, that upper basin that I discussed with you. So that was all designed and built by Kellywise Engineering. Design was approved in 2004, and construction was completed in 2005. The next two pictures are the crossing, the culvert crossing that was built as part of Unit 16. I actually went out these next two pictures and took them this morning. There was some silt problems. There were a bunch of tumbleweeds in there, some debris that I requested that the developer, Dorn Homes, get out there and clean up. They got all the debris out a week before last. As you can see on the left-hand side, there's already some tumbleweeds back in that first culvert, and then they did some grading to knock down some of the silt at the entrance to those culverts. This is the inlet side or the upstream side of those culverts at the Sable Way Crossing, and this is the downstream. And you can see from just the flow limits right there, basically that third from the right culvert is the only one that's really flowing any water whenever we had a storm the last time. What was that, five or six months ago, maybe? It may have been as long ago as last monsoon season when that area actually had water flowing in it. Next slide is just a cover sheet for the drainage report addendum that ACE Engineering, Allen Engineering, did in 2017, or no, 2015, excuse me. It was completed construction in 2017. And once again, this is a design report completed by an Arizona-registered engineer, so they are meeting the state requirements for the drainage that is being completed out there. The next two slides are actually the as-built information from Lion Engineering since we had had discussions with the people out there in Pronghorn with their concerns. Excuse me. We went ahead and asked that they do a detailed as-built, and you can't really read it because it's so small, but all of the red detail within the channel limits and within the detention basin limits are actual as-built elevations as we go along there. The bottom left, at the start of it there, is where Antelope Meadows Drive is, the detention basin, and then as we move through, you've got a couple of side channels that come out of the Pronghorn Unit 13 subdivision, and we have verified that everything flows from the top end to the bottom end and goes through those culverts at Sable Way. So the channel does actually flow. Also, in regards to that, I did some verification with the elevation of the culverts, the elevation of the road, and the elevation of that lot just below where the culverts are at up there in the top right-hand corner, and there's just under a foot and a half elevation difference between the top of the road and the finished floor elevation of the house on that lot. So basically, what I'm telling you is if, for whatever reason, those culverts did clog and there was a backup, it would actually flow over the road before it ever got to the elevation of the home on that lot. Our next slide is my last one. This is the other area that there's been a lot of concern voiced about, and that is moving on into Unit 18, and then at the very top, Unit 20. They have presented a Plomar, which is a conditional letter of map revision to FEMA to be able to channelize this area and limit that floodplain down to the green area and the red of the detention basin that's right adjacent to it. Some of the complaints that I've received are that they're out there grading in this area that's been sheet flow forever, and we have directed them that until they have the approvals from FEMA, they cannot do any of the construction in this channel. So that's basically where we're at today.
Laura has a comment?
Yes.
I really don't know if there's going to be an answer for this. I myself need to be clear on what the responsibilities of the developer are. I don't care which of our builders this is. And the other thing, I also want to be sensitive to the citizens and their concern and their perceptions, so I have to be clear in my own mind what the issue is, what the solution is, and while this was helpful, I don't think the citizens with the perception they have would be satisfied with that. So I'm being hard-nosed, I guess, but I want to understand. I understand exactly what you said about FEMA. I've lived here a very long time. Of course, I certainly know, you know, about the floodplain, but when they perceive the developer are doing things that are going to alter the flow of water, I think they have to be heard. Now, we heard them. We listened. We were all very thoughtful and careful about that. This wouldn't reassure me. How can we reassure them?
The reassurance that we have to give them is that, you know, we have professional engineers that are designing these systems that, you know, are tested through the state, approved through the state. We do a review process as they submit these subdivisions, verify that everything's going to work in their design, and then they are responsible for certifying that everything was built per their design and that it does work. That's the criteria that we set for any development that comes into town, is you have to have a registered engineer design it. We will review it and approve it, and then they have to certify that everything was built per their design. The onus is ultimately on the developer in regards to this. The only, that major drainage through there is a type-two drainage channel, which means the town is responsible just for structural integrity, which would mean cleaning the culverts out if there was some kind of a failure with riprap or something like that. But the maintenance of the overall channel for weeds and flows and all of that is the, actually, the HOA is responsible for it. I did review the plat before I came over this afternoon. It designates them as responsible.
I really appreciate you going out and seeing that, you know, the drainage needed clearance and all of that. The statements made to us more than once was that the developer was making changes that they shouldn't make. Are those factual?
Yeah, that is a comment that was made, and quite frankly, it is a work in progress. The very important element of this is the one that Boyd pointed out, and that is downstream of the constructed drainage facility, where there are no houses right now, but downstream, it is still under construction, as are the streets, the water lines, sewer lines, and all of that. But in the event tonight, we had a huge storm event, and in the incredibly unlikely event that all of the culverts were plugged, the water would still not go into anybody's house. It would go over the road instead. Okay? If that happened tonight, when the rest of the channel is not constructed all the way out, there is still the element of safety that it will go over the road, although the likelihood of a, was that a six-barrel structure, of it passing no water underneath the road is today zero. Okay? But let's just hypothetically, let's say that happened, it still wouldn't get into anybody's house.
Okay. I'm grateful for that reassurance. As many of you know, I've been flooded more than once since I lived here, so I'm super sensitive about this, and when a developer does something he shouldn't do, we have the right to make him correct it?
Yes.
Okay, that's important for them to know, and it's also important for them to know that we do it.
Mary?
I have had discussions with some of the people I'm assuming that were here for the council meeting over the last two years. I've had several meetings. I met with them out on site. I've walked the site with them and have discussed their concerns. The fact that things aren't getting done as quickly as they would like, I really don't have any control over that, and just, you know, to further the point, the slide that's up there right now, that green area and the red area adjacent to it is all part of the stuff that's in, for the federal government to make a determination on. We, as the town, are not making that determination. The federal government is, as well as they did the diagonal one up there on the top. That was a FEMA-designated project that we now have a letter of map revision on, which is the final stage through FEMA to get approval, so...
Thank you, Boyd, for all that effort, and I just want to say to you, I feel so bad for any of our staff when they have to deal with misperceptions of our citizens, and I want to thank you and applaud you for all the effort you put forth.
Thank you.
Mary?
I just had a couple of questions. You know, looking at this with the floodplain, I do realize that some of the properties are extremely close to it, and, you know, nature is nature. I mean, there are those forces of nature that can happen. We do the best we can to make sure that we have everything corrected, but, you know, I understand that nature still is what it is. After the developer is done with doing everything, and I understand when they were here last week, a lot of the talk was about the fact that there was so much debris in those culverts and all of that, as the town will be the ones going out there checking on that. We're doing it now, or we'll be doing it later, or how does that work? Just making sure the area is clear, you know, if we do have a lot of rain runoff, however.
Yes. Once the development is approved and accepted by the town, then it becomes our responsibility, and I can tell you that the majority of the debris that is in these is tumbleweeds. When I first went out last, week before last, to look at this, basically, the two culverts on each side were completely covered in tumbleweeds. If we get a major storm that comes through that actually gets this channel to flowing in any extreme, it's going to push those tumbleweeds through those culverts. It's usually larger debris, you know, two-by-fours or something like that, or something of more substance than a tumbleweed.
Right.
It's going to be what clogs those culverts, but irrelevant of that, it, once we have fully accepted everything, it becomes the town's responsibility to maintain that those culverts are clear.
Okay.
That has not occurred yet. That's why I've had the developer back out there.
Right. I understand, but I'm just thinking about now and then after, when the developer's met his requirements or their requirements, you know, then it will be ours and we'll maintain. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Any other questions? Larry?
Yeah, just a comment and looking into the future. Boyd, if you could go back to the, I think it's your second slide that shows the floodplain. I think what you're going to find is that once the construction at Pronghorn is completed, which will be in the next couple of years, that Pronghorn will be completely built out, and then at that point in time, two things are going to happen. One will be opening up Parkview Drive, the one that some people that are to the east of it really want open yesterday, and then those on the west of it don't want it ever open, but nevertheless, okay, but as we're looking into the crystal ball, when Pronghorn is done, we, the town, is, we're going to be blamed for the flooding that occurs to the north, and actually, that's not the slide, Boyd, it's the one that shows the much-
The whole drainage region?
The much broader picture, and what, it's still, that one right there. You take a look at the area where you have the major confluence of about three different legs of the FEMA floodplain, there's houses there. Okay? That's Paquito Valley and Antelope Meadows, and of course, when we end up having a significant storm event, 100-year storm, 150, 200-year storm event, we will be blamed, meaning Pronghorn and Viewpoint subdivisions, will be blamed for the flooding. I want to point out very specifically, the drainage, which Boyd did a great job of putting together, goes, what, three miles, four miles to the east of that area, and is a much broader area than what is developed, meaning Pronghorn and Viewpoint. That's a huge drainage basin, and the town of Prescott Valley has a different set of rules about building either in or adjacent to floodplains. You don't allow it. You will not issue a permit for a house to be built in the FEMA floodplain. That was a decision that was made by this council back in 1991. That is not universally- That is not universally held by other governmental entities. But there will come a day when there is a very large storm event, like what happened in about 2002, 2003, 2004, somewhere, right, right in that timeframe, where there were a lot of homes that got wet, and a lot of property got wet. And we were blamed for it because Pronghorn had just started, there may be 100 houses, and we got blamed. Well, that blame will continue, so just brace yourself for that.
Good. Marty?
Yeah, just a quick question. Those covert clusters that you have there, I know that there are several of them around the town in different areas, not necessarily around Pronghorn and Antelope, but along Robert Road and other areas. And we're coming into the monsoon season right now. My question is, do we inspect them right after a monsoon and house soon after if we do?
Generally, we will get a call that there is a blockage or a backup, but any of these culverts that are our responsibility in town. And our stance is basically, we're out there all hands on deck, cleaning them out when we get that notification. Generally, it's in a monsoon storm that we get the call.
Yeah, no, I understand that. So, it's almost immediate that we have people out there the very next day or as soon as it's dry enough to get out there?
Not necessarily. There are times when our guys are out there in the rain, cleaning those things out.
That's also good to know. So, thank you. And it's important that everybody knows that we do stay on top of it, we do clean them out immediately as needed.
Jody?
Thank you, Mayor. Boyd, thank you for all the work that you've done on this, it's appreciated. My question is, does the contractor offer a warranty on the work?
We, once, once everything's installed and we accept, you know, the engineer certifications as built and everything, that's the beginning of our two-year warranty period. Every project we do in town, after we've said, okay, everything's done per requirements, per plans, then that triggers the start of a two-year warranty, which they're responsible for. After the two years, if they, when they address our concerns, then it's the town's responsibility.
Other questions?
Yep.
Mike?
Yeah, I just want to clarify one thing. We were talking about cleaning the culverts, and, you know, obviously, when the developer is doing their work, they're responsible for that. Once they turn it over to us, we're responsible. You did mention, and I didn't catch it, but the HOA may be responsible for cleaning of some culverts, or not necessarily?
They're responsible for maintaining the vegetation, weeds, and that type of stuff.
Okay.
Cleaning out the culverts, the tumbleweeds, and that type of stuff, it's kind of a gray area.
Yeah.
You know, technically, they should be taking care of it before the tumbleweeds blow away, but once it's affecting the structural integrity or the ability of the system to work, then it's our responsibility to take care of it at that point.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Anything else, Boyd?
That's all I have in regards to this.
Okay. Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to the next one. Discussion, finance policy, four-dash-one-one PSPRS pension funding. Bill, you are up.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. The item before you tonight for your review and discussion is the town's new public safety pension policy. As you know, every town, basically every town, city, county in Arizona, is struggling to find ways to pay for their unfunded pension liability. So, tonight, the town has come up with how we're going to address the, our unfunded liability. And as you can see in the RFCA at the very, at the very first page, you can see right now, this year, it's $12.2 million. So, in the policy on page, the second page, 5.1, there are three methods that we're going to, or three funding sources that we're going to look at, and hopefully, these three will pay down our unfunded liability. The first one is, we're going to take all the money that's budgeted for the town's police department's retirement funding, which is about 1.5 million. And typically, we pay this over every two weeks throughout the year. What we're recommending now is we take all that money that's budgeted, which would include the officers in a draw program, and make that payment in July. So, basically, it's going to be about a $1.5 million payment to the state retirement system. The state will take that money and then invest any excess money throughout the year. Now, right now, there's been years and years ago where we've had issues where the state wasn't investing the money properly, and it was, you know, we could do probably better than they could do. Well, they've actually turned that around, and they can get a significantly higher rate of return than we can. So, we feel that any additional interest earnings by us making this lump sum payment to them at the end of July will help offset or lower our unfunded liability. So, that's the first step. The second one is, any money above the $3 million that we currently have as a result of the half a cent sales tax increase back in 2016, we're going to take that extra money and then apply that portion or all of that extra money against the unfunded liability. In fiscal year 1819, it's going to be, we budgeted $900,000. We also would like to make that payment also in July. So, you're going to see, come July, you're going to see a lot of money basically being paid out of the general fund and applied against this retirement system. In the attempt that we're going to hopefully pay it down over the next 10 to 12 years is what our goal is. Because this additional money, we hope, will generate anywhere from, you know, oh, 1.2 million is what we're hoping, between just additional payments and any interest earnings that it's going to accumulate. Now, the third one, which is new, is that we're going to take any remaining budget balance in a police department's budget, so this would be salary benefits and operational funds. And we're going to take that money, and at the end of the year, also apply that extra money against the balance of our unfunded liability. So, we, last year, it would have been over $400,000. A lot of it is due to salaries when there's turnover and, you know, officers taking a time period to hire new officers and that. So, that's almost $400,000 that they, police department, will not have available to spend. So, but the other part of that is, that's going to affect our fund balance. Instead of having that money at the end of the year roll into our general fund fund balance, it's now going to be paid and applied to our unfunded liability. So, you won't see our fund balances in the general fund growing nearly as much as we had seen in the past, and this is one of the reasons. So, that addresses kind of the funding sources. I don't know if you have any questions regarding that, but I have one other topic that I'd like to, to bring up, but if you want to, has anybody had questions on our funding?
Questions? Now, Mike?
Yeah, I know, I was interested, I've talked about it before, the $400,000 that we may have at the end of the year. And that's not carried over, it just goes in a general fund generally, so, or?
Yes. That happens with all departments. So, any department that has any extra, excess unspent budget, that money just rolls into the general fund, then it's re-appropriated in the following years.
Okay.
And other questions?
The one other, oh.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jody.
Oh, that's all right, Mayor. And just for the sake of those who are listening in tonight, Bill, could you just also explain that about the amount that we're paying down? Because I know some of the citizens, we're considering it would continue to grow. Would you just touch on that?
Well, I mean, there's a lot of unknowns in that. So, right now, if everything stayed the same, it would be around 10 years. The problem is that the pension continued to make changes to their system. So, now, one of the last changes is that they're changing their interest earnings, they're lowering their interest earnings. So, that means any future amount is going to gain less interest. So, that means that the contribution most likely, or our share, will go up. So, over the next few years, you know, I think that the balance, I mean, putting, applying these lump sum payments and doing all these payments will definitely help, but I truly believe that over the next couple of years, you could, you can probably, hopefully, see a leveling and then a slight decrease. If we didn't do this, I firmly believe that it would actually go up. Instead of 12.2, we'd see 13 million or even more in the future years.
You've done great work. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to make comment. I've kept an eye on the city of Prescott and the way they're dealing with their PSPRS, and it's similar, I think, approach, and I think it's all kind of tied to the recommendations of the board, the PSPRS board. And I think this is a good solution, and there's always a chance, as you're saying, in the future, there may be the things that reduce our liability and payment.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have quite the luxury that Prescott has as it's related to paying down their pension, but also, they, their liability is significantly higher than what our liability, and also, they have fire. And, you know, since you have a, an older community, that officers have been there a lot longer, that unfunded liability grew significantly. So, we don't quite have their problem, but we also don't have their funding stream either.
Good. Other comments, anyone?
The one last thing I'd like to address is House Bill 2097, which was passed earlier this year, basically is mandating that we're going to bring the policy before you, actually before this, but now this prompted us to bring it to you now. So, House Bill 2097, basically, it mandates that the town must adopt a funding pension policy before July 1, 2019. So, hopefully, at the end of this month, I'll come back before you to formally approve our policy. The pension policy also must include how to maintain the stability of the town's contribution, how and when the town's funding requirements will be met, defining the town's funded ratio target, which in all pension policies, I'm not sure there's anybody that would be below 100%. So, almost all pension policies will be funded 100%. If you're under, over 100, that's awesome, but the likelihood, right now, we're at 58% or something, so we have a little ways to go. Also, every year, we're going to incorporate this into our policy, our budget policy, or our budget resolution for adoption every year, but town council has to approve basically the plans, assets, and liabilities. So, like today, you saw on the first page of the RFCA, there's that $12 million. That'll be adjusted every year. So, we have to bring that forward, and you have to formally approve that on an annual basis. And the last thing is that once you approve our pension policy, we're going to go ahead and put it on our town websites for everyone to see. So, with that, Mayor, I'll, Council, I'll answer any other questions.
I really just have a comment more than a question. When you mentioned this new bill that the legislature passed, so for, if I've got this right, for the past 20 years, basically, the state has done absolutely nothing to protect the retirement fund, except let it run rampant and lose all of the money. So, now, in their wisdom, instead of fixing the problem, they've decided to pass legislation that forces us to fix the problem, that they created. That's correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure I got that right. Laura?
At this point, I'd like to give a raspberry, but I'd like to keep the dignity. So, instead, I'm going to say, I want to thank you for all the work. It's important that we deal with it and not pass this on to future council members. It's very important what we're doing right now. And I want our officers out there to know, it's also a lot of respect for them.
Any other comments? Bill, anything else?
Nope. Mayor, I'll be back at June 28th for final adoption.
Everybody approve?
Yep.
Okay, then we go to number six. Discussion, water rate, wastewater rate study. Mark, how are you?
So, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. It's that time of year again, the start of the summer, where you get to see me talk about the interesting water rates and sewer rates. So, going through, as we normally do, Bill and I meet towards the beginning of the calendar year, and for the next five, six rigorous months, we meet pretty regularly for dozens and dozens of hours. I'm sure by now, he's pretty sick of seeing my face. But what we cover is everything that goes into what we need to analyze and interpret to determine what our rates should be or could be. So, what we do is establish what the rates need to be, so they need to be based on the cost of service. So, we can't provide that water unless we're getting the cost of that service back to it. We have to maintain adequate financial performance, so we do have bonds and policies that we do have to follow and make sure that we have those covered over that year. And we have to make sure that our cost to our customers is what it should be. So, currently, our water rate structure is fixed on a monthly charge, and that's based on the meter size and the customer class, residential, commercial, hydrant meter, anything like that. We do charge on a per-thousand-gallon basis. We do round down to the lowest thousand for that. We have had a three-tiered structure rate for several years now, and that is used to help with the conservation of water. Basically, the more water you use, the more you will end up paying for it in the long As it sits right now, a single-family resident for 6,000 gallons used in a month, that rate is at $27.48. The sewer side goes right alongside with the water. Their sewer rate is based on the size of their water meter. That is calculated through the winter months, November through March, and that is used as the winter quarter average. The vast majority of residents do not use water during the winter to fix their landscaping, refill their pools when it's 40 degrees outside. So, that's an industry standard that we've adopted, and we take 90% of that five-month average and use that as the cap for their sewer rate throughout the rest of the year. Currently, our average is about 4,000 gallons on the average residential home, which would equate to about $23.23 per month. So, what goes into the calculations of the rates that we need to have? So, we have the budget side, which is everything that goes into the expenditures to run the system itself, the debt service, which is the coverage that we need to cover our bonds and other finances, the projected gallons. So, one of the things that Bill and I spend the majority of those five months doing is calculating and figuring out what the best projection would be for the upcoming year. And then, along with that, the number of customers and growth of that. And those four components put together end up being the revenue requirement over the rate. So, that gives us that per-thousand-gallon rate. Some of the things that we have to use to come up with this calculation is our projection going forward. So, we have to look at customer growth, the operating expenses, personnel services, the number of customers, our projected gallons for this upcoming year. So, we're looking this year, it'd be about 1.6 billion gallons that we'll use for fiscal year 1819. The operating budget, also the debt service. And in the next slide, I'll be able to kind of show out where the operating fund balance, minimum coverage for that is for 90 days, and then also, the bond coverage on a decimal side. Our bond calls for 1.25 coverage, town policy has a 1.6, and you see, we are, at this time, very healthy above that. So, looking at the financial projections on the water side, right in the middle of the table, you'll see the debt service coverage of 1.9, 1.95, moving forward for the next two years. That is where we want to be, above that 1.6 for the town policy. Towards the bottom of the slide, you'll see the cash reserve ratio. That's where we need to be, at about 25%. We're very healthy, about 200% coverage. You will notice a dip into next year. What that is, is going to be the purchase and maintenance of two- uh, the purchase and maintenance of, uh, two tanks, uh, Summit Trail Tank and I believe, uh, Stone Ridge Tank, if I'm not mistaken. Uh, and those cost about $2 million each. So that, uh, definitely can cause that drop. But as you can see, our projections moving forward is that it does recover rather quickly. So when Bill and I come up with these, uh, projections and all that, we have this, uh, very robust spreadsheet that, uh, is linked to about five other spreadsheets that we put all this different information in and, uh, it's formulated in specific ways and it, uh, gives us these certain numbers that we use to base our, you know, projection on. So our rates currently are in the, uh, $3.21 for Block 1, uh, 385 for Block 2 and Block 3 and so on. Uh, the calculation that came through, uh, did suggest, and we'll say it did suggest, a very minuscule increase of less than 1%. Uh, based on, you know, different factors and projections that Bill and I do, uh, we do recommend that we do not, uh, propose a change at this time, that we can actually as a town absorb that cost if it does come true based on our projections. So I do want to clarify that, we do not recommend an increase at this time. So moving on to sewer, we look at the same factors with the sewer system. Uh, we fill in those expenses, growth and, and all that. Uh, the same coverages are on the sewer side as on the water side. As you can see with the sewer system, the coverages are very steady at a healthy level of about 1.9, 2.0 over the next several years. Uh, same with our cash reserves are very healthy as well. So once again, the calculations based on the projections and what we believe, uh, an even smaller increase was suggested at this time, uh, basically one penny per, uh, thousand gallons. And that is something that, uh, margin of error and all that, we, uh, would recommend to keep the rates as they are today. So again, no changes are being proposed for both water and the sewer rate. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
This is Laura.
Well, the obvious question is, at what point do you calculate we will no longer be able to handle that deficit and that we need to be rational and, and consider an increase?
Uh, well, that's going to basically come down to what is being used to cover the expenses of the operation itself. Uh, as soon as we start teetering on that line of, you know, we're absorbing more costs than what we can actually afford to absorb, that's where that rate increase then kicks in. Uh, but, uh, after much analysis into it, uh, yes, it is showing, maybe you should raising, uh, the rate by three pennies or on sewer side, one penny, but we believe that that is enough to where, uh, our projections, because Bill and I can't really predict the weather, um, there's that margin of error that we have to go by and that was, uh, basically what, what we decided with that to keep the rates as is today.
So the answer's unknown.
Well, would Bill ask to say something about a crystal ball earlier?
Yeah, we'll loan yours.
Yeah, but that's why we, uh, spend so much time and so much thoroughness going through this, because we want to be as precise as possible.
Mike, you had a question?
Well, I, I don't think I do. I think we were just talking about, we had a, an increase in rates, uh, last year.
Plus, yes.
And, uh, the only thing I can look at in terms of a crystal ball would be just growth use, increase in use. And then I think we've talked about our, uh, infrastructure probably lasting in terms of wastewater anyway, around 12 years. So, we're in, in pretty good shape.
As Senator has said many times, that growth does pay for growth.
Yep.
Uh, and, uh, looking back, if, uh, going to that drop, uh, in the coverage on the water side with those tanks, rather than having to possibly go out for another bond, those are, uh, basically cash financed by the town itself. So that's how, that's helping keep these rates steady and still one of the lower ones, especially in northern Arizona.
Right. Good. Any other question? Jody? No? Other comments? Mark, you're doing a good job.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate that. Okay, we move on into, uh, number seven. Discussion Amendment to Chapter 6 Animals. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So the discussion tonight is, I'm looking at making some changes to our animal control ordinance and I'm going to let the people who know about it discuss it with you and be able to answer any questions. But I just want to tell you that the reason we bring this forward tonight is, uh, for a couple of reasons. Number one is, uh, we are constantly looking at efficiencies within the police department, how we can do things better, provide better service to our, our residents. And so the, uh, the changes are pretty basic. We just am comparing with surrounding agencies and cities and some of the adjustments that we're asking for are in fees to bring us in line with those other cities. And we're also looking at, um, decriminalizing certain offenses. So aside from what our animal control supervisor, James Reisinger, will share with you, I just wanted to give you an example of how that's going to increase our efficiency. Right now, if, uh, you have your dog off leash or a barking dog or the dog at large and we find you and we give you a violation or citation for that, that's a criminal misdemeanor violation. So if somebody's up here from Maricopa visiting for a weekend or something and, and they get a ticket for having their dog off a leash and then they go back home and they don't pay that misdemeanor violation, there's a warrant that's issued for their arrest. And at some point, if they get stopped for traffic violation and they get their name run through the computer, they get arrested for having their dog not on a leash. Then they have to sit in the Maricopa County Jail or the Coconino County Jail and then they have to arrange for extradition. So for not having your dog on a leash, you could have somebody sitting in jail, this is no joke, in Maricopa for up to 14 days. It just doesn't make a lot of sense. And so, um, that's just one example of how we want to try to become more efficient and provide better service. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to ACO Supervisor Reisinger and, uh, after his presentation, it's our hope that you will direct us to bring this back to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, uh, I would like to introduce you to, again, to James Reisinger, our animal control supervisor. He's just finished his first year of service with us, done an outstanding job and I'd just like to, uh, in front of you all in the public, you know, thank, thank him for the outstanding work that he's doing for us. And, uh, James?
James, good to see you.
Good to see you. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Members. Um, some of the changes that we want to address here are, as the Chief has, uh, just initiated, uh, explained to you, are very clear and, and they're going to be very easy to understand. Um, as we're going to go through, I'm going to kind of explain it through each of the, um, the violations of what they are and how we're wanting to change them and also some of the additions, some of the takeaways. So that, we're going to be moving around a little bit, so I'll try to hopefully, uh, keep up, you guys can keep up with me. If there's any questions, you need me to back up, just let me know. So some of the things that we are changing, um, we're going to start with is when we actually start at the very beginning, there's going to be Animal Code 601010D, as in David. And it talks about basically on animal licensing services. And what this is actually going to be is meaning any person, individual, um, participant, um, corporation or any of the associates of these engage in business to produce licensing applicants and issue licensing. So what this is actually talking about, this first one, is going to be basically allowing us to say who we can allow to license, um, to assist us, vets or if we have outsourced, um, agencies to help us issue licensing. Um, some of these, as we go through, support the verbiage, basically we don't want to ever contradict ourselves. So as we go through, we, we have different points in it. That 6105C, it basically talks again and it uses the word, um, animal licensing services to be issued for licensing. And then is other ones, 60106A3, uses the word entity, again, supporting the idea of animal licensing services. 60108A also uses the word, uh, we're adding the word entity to support those. So then we go through that. Now, the next change with, when we talk about licensing and how we want to provide a better service to our community, currently the way we are doing things right now is if you purchase a license, that license expires on December 31st. So if we have a new person that has moved into our community and they come up here in October and we require them in, within one month's time to purchase that, they're only going to have, they're going to be able to purchase that, but they're going to purchase that at the full price and they're going to only get one month and then the next month they're going to, and the next year, when the new 2019 comes around, they're going to have to do it again. And we want to be able to provide a service where when they get their license, the purchase date that they have is the, the following year, just like our vehicles or anything else that's like that, they expire. So we are, um, asking to remove that section of that and add the wording that would support that. And with that supporting, what we will add in there is as long as it doesn't exceed the expiration of rabies vaccine, because the licensing is to support, to make sure people are complying with the laws of getting their animals vaccinated. So if you have an animal, basically we will say you get one year as long as it does not exceed that vaccine period. And so they actually then get a better use of their money and we don't have to do any like cut costs because it's halfway through the year. So it makes it a little bit sis, easier system, not only for us to manage, but it's an easier system for our community. Um, then as we go through, we are asking, as we look in compliance with, um, other jurisdictions, what we want to do, uh, suggest currently right now for an altered dog or an unaltered dog, we have, um, different fees is for a one-year, two-year or three-year license. So what we're asking for the animals that are altered, that have been fixed so they can't have more puppies, we're asking a $2 increase on, for each of the prices. So currently, right now, for a one-year, it's $8 and we're asking that to go to a 10. And then currently it goes from, um, uh, $14 to 16 and then $20 to a $22. And then we're asking for an increase for the unaltered dogs as well. Those are a higher price because of, sometimes we have a lot of problems and they're going to have dogs that are going to get out and then they actually create a bigger problem. So the unaltered, um, dogs, uh, start at 35. We're asking for only a $1 increase to go to $36. And then from, um, 55 to 56 and 75 to 76 for the three-year license. So we're just basically, the nutshell, it's $2 for the altered, unaltered, it's $1. So those are the changes on those ones. Um, some of the changes also on the fees that we're looking at right now is we have a fee basically, then we're losing money each time we actually do this on, we, we offer a duplicate. Basically if someone loses their tag, um, basically we allow them to come in and basically get it for a dollar. What we're suggesting is, okay, we're not going to make you charge the $8, but regardless of what tag you had, we're going to charge you, move that up to a $6, which will cover fees to actually, because each time we issue a license, it costs. So that just covers basically the town's fees for that. And then we are asked, asking to remove the transfer. What that is, and the transfer is, is if someone comes from another jurisdiction, someone comes from another state or something else, uh, another area, we have been charging, if you have a tag, we, we basically charge $1, $1 for them just to switch over to our tags. What we're asking is actually to remove that so that basically they still just have to comply. If it's an $8 or it goes to a $10, if it's a $10, they just get the $10 license for, for the animals. And then the big changes come in and as the Chief kind of talked about, um, is dealing with three categories in the area is talking about dog at large, um, no dog licensing and barking dog. Those violations, I know, we want to address. Currently how we have is we have a tier and, and I think you have, um, a chart that has a spreadsheet in front of you. And this kind of lets you know, we looked at some of the other surrounding areas as well as like Maricopa, Flagstaff, and looking at what they're doing and how they're doing it so that we are falling in line with, with what they're doing in the other jurisdictions. What we are looking at is, as the Chief gave a great example of the dog at large situation, we are recommending that the first violation within any period that they come up here, it would be a civil, uh, civil violation, so a petty offense that they would have. But we are asking from a simple, um, fine of $24, which it is currently at, and that would go up to $150. And that would be a set, um, fine. So there would still be a penalty, a monetary penalty that we would place upon them to encourage them that we do have a statewide, um, county and within Prescott Valley, uh, rules of all dogs need to be on license. So it would encourage to make sure people stay within that. If someone decides to violate that and, uh, decides to ignore us after we've issued them a citation, within 12 months, they can get another ticket. If that ticket is, um, issued to them, that ticket actually then would go to a criminal violation, back to exactly where we were, we are currently at. They are showing within 12 months that they are not listening, they're not complying with the rules that we have asked them to comply with. And so at that point, we would, we would, um, issue them that criminal ticket and that fine would be, go from a 44 to, um, 300. And if you look at comparisons of other jurisdictions, most of them have just a rate of 500 for that. We're actually putting some, um, leeway in there. So it's still not a hefty jump to it, but we're still in compliance of what we're doing within our jurisdictions. So we would have that, and that's only for 12 months. And after that 12 months, if someone happens to do it again, it would actually repeat back and the process would actually start back over and they would actually get a civil violation. So, we get a ton of wind up here and a lot of the times, I can predict it almost any time, wind or any of our monsoon seasons or anytime we have our fireworks going off for 4th of July, I'm going to have my guys out there and we're going to be rounding up dogs because dogs are afraid. And if we, we feel that it is not right for us to go because the dog is afraid because of what's going on, to penalize our, to penalize them in a criminal way. On the dog licensing, we actually looked at, um, moving that to a civil. And I wanted to explain, we actually are not doing that and because we are staying in compliance with state law. State law, actually there's, um, statutes that basically say that we have to stay within, uh, the county law. And the county law currently right now is, um, misdemeanor two. So we cannot go less than what that is, even though in our first offense, we would want to do that, we are, can't do that. But we have actually written in there, which we have, um, creatively added in there that we can do, is, um, if they come compliance with the licensing, if we issue them a, a, a ticket because they didn't get their dog license and they get that before they go to court, they get their dog license and they come and they show proof of that, then that, that fine is completely dropped. And so that goes away. The, we do have basically also in there a second offense. The first offense goes from 24, can be a 24 to $100. If that, if they do not get their license, they could be, they would be charged that. If in 12 months, they still decide not to get their license and we issue them a secondary, um, ticket, that fine would go, um, be a penalty of 300 because again, they're not complying with that and it's a health standard that the federal law wants us with the rabies vaccine. The barking dogs, similar to, it mirrors what is going on with the, uh, dog at large. And so we would have a first offense that it's going from a misdemeanor to a civil violation. Um, and then that increase would go from 50 to $200 for that disturbing that piece. The second offense, within 12 months, a misdemeanor would be the class two because they have, within that 12 months, continued that problem. They haven't solved the issue and that would be a penalty of 500. Um, on some of these, we have tiers of a third and fourth offenses. We've removed that to just make it simpler and easier to understand. We have within 12 months, if you do it twice, the penalty's going to go up. And that's basically the just, uh, what we are looking, there is other sections in there that, uh, that we do have that are going to be compliant, as we know, with a service animals that has came down, um, in compliance with what state law is, we're falling also within that, that that is embedded in here as well. Any questions?
Questions, anyone? Marty?
Yeah, uh, going back to changing the expiration dates of, uh, dog licenses, uh, where instead of everybody, everything expires December 31st, so now you're going to have everybody signing up and it's a year from the day they get the license. Is that going to create, uh, any additional costs or expenses in, in bookkeeping or is it going to make it easier for you?
In the long run, and as we look forward to the next, um, section that we wanted to talk about after this, we will explain how a lot of that will actually, um, take care of itself. But it is easier, it doesn't change anything. The information comes in. Currently, right now, we don't have the infrastructure when someone, uh, their information expires to remind them. So, um- So when they, if it expires, regardless of when that expires, it doesn't affect. One of the things that I actually was able to do in a study and look at, the finances of what comes in on the cost of the licensing as, and this is not a surprise, but there was a dramatic reduce once September hit. Once September hit, the costs that the general fund would bring in for licensing, each month, dramatically dropped, almost in hundreds of dollars each time. And so by doing this, we would actually bring a management and a better continual rate of keeping people with their dogs licensed.
Mary?
Yeah, I just had a question. And my question is, is when you refer to the barking dogs, so, you know, I know that before you came here, people were calling constantly about dogs barking in neighborhoods. And you did some amazing revamping-
Yes.
-on that. And, you know, I truly thought that was wonderful, it was well-needed. And so as I'm looking at this here, the person that does complain in regards to a dog barking, that person actually has to come out and really make a valid proof of what their claim is, correct?
Correct.
Okay, 'cause-
Yeah, we developed, as you kinda eluded to, we developed, I think, a better system-
Yes.
...and how we verify this information. We wanna provide a service to them that they are not feeling like we're putting this all on them, but because of that, they are technically the victim of this, of the disturbing the peace, that we need to have them be able to provide us the correct information of how they are being disturbed, and a correct documentation that supports that.
Okay, okay. Well, I do really appreciate that, appreciate that, 'cause for a while there, there was a tremendous amount of dog barking, dog barking, and, you know, it just seemed like the people that really had the dogs, or maybe the people that had no dogs at all, were being, you know, visited by the police department, so, yeah.
Yes, it actually puts, put a lot, there was a lot of people that were, there was neighbor disputes-
Yeah.
-that would happen, and people would go after each other, and there was no proof that they were, they were just mad at each other. This puts the responsibility of them providing us the proof, so that we're not sending our officers to someone's house that doesn't need to be going there.
Right, yeah. So I really appreciate, you've done a tremendous job, and thank you.
Mike?
Yeah, just wondering, why do we make that distinction between altered and unaltered?
Why do we have that? It's basically, it's been gone, come down from county, and what the altered basically does is it helps keep the stray population down. When, prior to, and this has been enacted for many, many years, when there was nothing that was in place with that, the whole spayed and neutered programs that are many out there, when the dogs get out, dogs are gonna get out, that's why I'm here, they are going to go find each other. And some of the reasons dogs get out is because it's that time. And so they will do that. By doing this, it actually keeps the dogs, can keep the dogs, and it also can keep their behavior in control, and it can keep it a safer community.
So you're saying, 'cause I'm looking at the, again, I guess, the fines, and I would think it would be reversed, that the non-altered that may have more impact versus altered would take precedence in terms of keeping them confined. But you're, it sounds like you're saying altered dogs are probably more wild.
No, altered dog, yeah, altered, altered dog being spayed and neutered-
Right.
...are not. Let me clarify that, they are not. And that's the reason why there's a lower fine, because people are-
Okay, so it is a lower, 'cause I-
It is the lower, I, yeah, that is the reverse of that.
I thought I heard it was-
So dogs that are not altered, that have not had a surgery of any sort, it's a higher price for them.
Okay, well, that's a risque conversation. Anyway. The other is the leash. I was wondering, how do we handle that? 'Cause it seems to be a lot now, and, you know, I witness it every day, I live across from a park, and people are very liberal about unleashing their dogs and letting them run until, you know, your truck comes along.
Yes.
And then we had, I think, an issue just a couple days ago where we had two, two dogs loose that, that, you know, I think attacked. So how do you handle those?
With the dog-at-larges that are off-leash, it is going to be a continue battle for us. Our, our job is to educate. And it's not just, yes, as soon as our truck comes up, everyone's gonna be the perfect animal owner, their dog is perfect, and that's how it always is. It's when we're not there. And what we are trying to continually and constantly do is educate. We have gone into the community centers and spent in evenings with them, asking people to come, and then spread that word. We do random checks throughout the parks, we try to be very creative, so that not only is not us trying to get out there and, oh, we're gonna catch you, and we're the big bad dog catchers that are coming out, we don't want that image. We want that image that comes out and is saying, let me show you how to do it better. Because you may have a good dog, and your dog may be good off the leash, but that doesn't mean the next person next to you with their dog off the leash is. And nine times out of 10, when we see two dogs get off leash, they're gonna go at each other and they're gonna fight. And dogs fight, that happens, but then the people get involved because they wanna protect their dog, and they get bit, and that's where the injury is. So we try to make it more of, like, we're not here to actually issue these citations. Yes, there is the penalty, we're going to give that. But if we can take each individual person and try to educate them of why it's a benefit for them to do that, what it does for the dog to learn how to behave on a leash, it teaches them to be better for the community, and wonderful, 'cause our community is an animal community, and there's a lot of dogs up here.
Yep. Thank you. Barry?
Oh, and just one more thing, when you refer to the leash-
Yes.
-I find it interesting, and I've encountered this at my employment, that the dog has the leash on, but the owner doesn't hold the leash.
Yes, that doesn't work.
No, it doesn't work, but they have this idea that-
It doesn't work at all. And so we do try to that. Also, there's, we see the cell of people that have leashes, that have the extendable leashes. That doesn't work either, and it's the same thing, 'cause basically, the reason, the law is six feet, and the reason why they say the law should be six feet is, at that range, an owner should be able to have control of their dog. Anything beyond that, you're losing control of your dog.
Marty?
I just have a question. I always see this, and it drives me crazy, when I see a dog in the back of a pickup truck, no leash, just running back and forth. Is there, are there any regulations regarding that, or is it totally permissible?
The simple answer is, it's allowed.
It just drives me crazy every time I see it, you know, this, anyway.
Any other comments, questions? Chief, you got another comment to it?
I just asked the mayor if he would direct us to bring this back or not.
Approve, everybody?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. And then the next item?
Yeah, let's go on to the next item then, that's discussion outsourcing management, wait a minute.
Yes.
Outsource, yeah, outsourcing.
So again, I'm gonna turn it over to the expert, you can see why I didn't do the presentation before, probably, so. But before James comes back up, I just wanted to say that this is another thing that I know that the town is very passionate about, and it's outsourcing services when it makes sense and when it's efficient to do so. And as you go through this, and I hope you noticed that when you read the proposed RFCA, that our records clerks, the four of them, handle over 2,000 licenses a year. And this also goes back to Councilmember Marty Grossman's comment about, when do we know if we stagger our licenses, when are we gonna know when they're coming up for a renewal? Well, we're not gonna, because we propose to outsource all of those services to a company who will keep the data files and everything else, send out reminders and all those kinds of things for us. So again, it's, it's another example of our animal control personnel and the rest of our staff looking at continual ways to improve our efficiencies in the department. So with that, I'll turn it over to James.
So this next one, basically, is outsourcing, as you mentioned, the licensing. So Marty, this directly is gonna hopefully give you a real good, clear answer. We looked at this, and what this service actually does is it's an all-income licensing system that provides the best service, I believe, to our community. Some of the issues that I wanna address, and what this actually fixes, is, as we do, we do have a ton of licenses that come through. But one of the problems is, is we don't have time and personnel to actually send out and mailings every single time that license is up. So on a lot of the times we're out in the field, we get someone that purchases a dog from Humane Society, they educate them, they get their dog license there, everything is in compliance, we're happy. But after that year, that owner did not know, oh, I have to do this every year, or every three years, depending on the rabies vaccine, and they don't do that, and they never done that. We have come in contact with many, many citizens that basically thought, oh, I just had to do, I thought it was a one-time. And what we can do by this service is, we can do a multiple of different things at this company, it's pet data is the name of it. And what they are gonna, what they would provide is a system where we could send, they would be able to go online, they would be able to have access by mail or by phone to get their animals licensed. And they would actually take that, they would manage all the data, that is, that would remove it out of our data, which, in the process right now, we are converting. And one of the interesting things with that, with our new program that we're going with the police department, it does not have a section in there for animals unlicensing, so it would have to be specially created specifically. This actually even solves that problem right there. And it, they take all the data, they will take all the data from everything that we have. And what's nice is none of that information will ever be lost. They'll take that, they'll put that in there, and they'll be able to pull that. Monthly, they provide all the reports, they provide all the stats of what's going, how many sales, how many mailings they've sent out, how many late fees are coming on. They will manage each, each one of them. So prior to someone's new licensing that needs to be get up, they will send it out. If they have one that is showing that their rabies vaccine is about to expire, they will make sure that the owner is aware that that vaccine is expiring, so they can go to their vet and be able to get a new vaccine for their pet. So this will be able to provide that. They will have the mailings that they will provide through this, and we will be able to be able to, they can mail it out, get online, and do that. What it comes down to is there's basically some startup fees and breakdowns of what it is. And I'll go through, basically, what it is, is they charge, basically, to start it up, they're gonna start up a website, and it's under their server, so it doesn't attach with us. Actually, went through our IT department to make sure there's any issues, there is not, because it's just a link. So what it would look like, it would still look like it's coming from us. It would be a part of ours, it would be a part of the animal control webpage, where they would be able to go to, go on there if they wanted to do the online side of it. So the startup actually is going to do that. It will take a few months to bring over all the data that we currently have, and they will input it all in. It's about, it's $1,000, it's a one-time startup for, regardless of how long we decide to go on with a contract, it's just that one time that they start it up. It also includes the phone number that they would use within our area, so the 928 numbers, they would have that, so it's still coming from us. They would have the manpower that is going to manage all that information. The forms that need to be given out to all the owners to be able to fill out, how to get their tags, the information for the rabies information, the reminder forms, stuff that we would actually hand out to all the vets, that's all in that setup, and they would provide all that information. The cost of what this is actually breaking down to, is what we are doing, is what we're proposing, is this contract, this contract is going to be a one-year contract with a two-year renewal rate. At each year, if we decide this isn't working for us, we have the opportunity at that year mark, with no penalty, to come and we can say, we're not going to continue that. The benefit of doing that and saying, okay, we're going into a new contract with a new group, we wanna stay with the one contract idea to see how it works out, the benefit to this is by doing the two renewal, we get a rate, a better rate per license on that for, and it comes out at a three-year, it looks like a three-year contract, but it's written as a one-year with a two-year renewal. So that's a kind of an important thing that we worked and negotiated and they agreed to. The cost of what it comes down to, and this cost comes down to the management of the system, the daily management of inputting everything that comes across them, this is what it comes down to. So for every tag that is sold in Prescott Valley, regardless of whether they're altered or not, regardless, if, well, we'll start here, at the first year, regardless of altered and unaltered, is gonna be $4.20. At the year two, if they buy a two-year license, regardless of what it is, it's an additional $2 on that $4.20, so $6.20. And then for a three-year license, it's an additional $2 on top of the two, so that would make it $8.20. And so that covers that cost. Currently, what we are doing right now with our licensing, majority, about 75% of our licensing is done by our vets, is not done by our offices. When we, we have in there that two, their services, they take $2 of that, of that, of that licensing. So currently, as we stand right now, we're at $8. For every single one they sell, they take $2 of that, so that $8 just simply makes it down six. But as I mentioned in the previous one, we are also looking at increasing the licensing, which actually balances out the base license, which is the main one that we sell, which is a one-year license, and it almost covers that $4.20, because we're, as we stand right now with our licensing system that we have. So we would have that. They would actually also include a $2.50 collection fee for every late fee. So the late fee, we are recommending it be at $10, which was in the ordinance section. Of that $10, $2.50 would come from that, for them processing that. At this point in time, the way we are managing, since we are not able to send out information to say, you're late, we're not able to follow up with those late fees. So that, reminders, we're not here to say, okay, we're gonna make revenue off of our late fees, that's not what we want. We want everybody to stay in compliance. But that amount is never, not even coming in with the system that we are currently at. We are asking that they will manage that for us, and they will give us reminders and say, these many people have not been compliance of this, so they will give that information to us. So that is all that. There is also a convenience fee that they add, it's a typical thing, that if you ever do anything with a website, there's always a convenience fee, and that is a $2. So for every transaction they charge, that is charged through the website, there's a $2. So if you have four dogs, which is the limit that you can have within Prescott Valley, and you license all four, then it's just $2, it's not $2 for each animal. They charge that, that is charged at the citizen, it's not, comes through the town. The first charges that I talked to is what is processed through the funds. So they would have that transaction fee. Now, if they decide to do a mail-in or a phone-in paperwork, that $2 doesn't apply because it's not online. So they also provide, they will, like I mentioned, they will provide all the applications, all the mailing, all the information that will be going out. They will also send the notices that will go out regularly. We have put in the ordinance there, a 15-day grace period for the late fee, so if you're late, we're still gonna give you 15 days to comply within our licensing without being penalized. We will, they will adhere to that and they will follow that, and so with, if they're in that, our citizens won't be penalized. So again, we're not trying to sit here and try to push people to say, okay, we're gonna make money off of every late fee. What we're trying to do is motivate people to just stay on time. And what is great about the system is, we, like I mentioned at the very beginning, we lose a lot after our first year, they don't re-renew. The system allows you to simply easily re-renew. Prescott, I spoke with them, and they actually have this system. They've been, they started this system in 2015, and they've been running this system successfully. They're coming up on their three-year contract without a renewal, and they have no qualms in continuing on with this system that they have in place. One of the interesting things that they showed our numbers, the chief mentioned, we're around 2,200 issued license. We've been actually staying at that level for the last couple of years, as we also know, our growth has increased, which would usually mean that that licensing should be increased. When I looked at that numbers prior to looking at pet data, I said, we need to figure out a better way of doing this. One of the interesting things that Prescott said is they were at, in 2014, they were at 3,600 licensing issued. Okay, that's at 2016, that's much less than our 2018 number. But in basically one year, they jumped about 600, they increased about 600. Their second year with using pet data, they increased their- Their second year with using Pet Data, they increased their licensing by a thousand. So, they became, because of the system, yes, there is cost that comes with this, but the increase that will come with that, and the continued use makes it so much better for our whole community and easily used. We will, they will also manage every single thing, they'll be in communication with vets to make sure the vets are in compliance and have all the paperwork, they will do that. And they will monitor that. There's many functions that they will actually have that we can do, but we are going to make it pretty simple. We're going to offer basically, like I said, the online, the mailing and the phone, those are the services. We will not be running any financial out of the town of Prescott Valley at all, they won't, they'll do that. They offer a couple of different ways of doing it. I talked with our fiscal management, and what they will do is they'll set up a bank, they have their bank, they set up an account through that, all fees that come through that, then from there on that, they will pay us. And so, it makes this, the transfers of funds fairly simple. Any questions?
That sound okay, Mary? No?
Uh, no, I think it's fine. I'm just thinking about my own dog tags right now, I'm just kind of, okay. Nobody sent me a renewal.
You're in deep trouble, Mary.
That's right.
Jody, you're...
I'm in deep trouble too.
Mike is in deep trouble?
Always.
Well, misery loves company, so we're trying together.
Okay, so just let me get this straight. This is going to make us more efficient, it's going to probably generate extra income, and it's going to free up our officers to do the job that they really need to do, correct?
Correct. Prescott's supervisor says she almost never thinks about it anymore. So, she is able to actually go out into the field and do her job better.
Sounds good to me, thank you.
Okay, if I can bring you back, Mar, Rick?
Yep.
Done and done.
Done and done, everybody else? Good job there, James. Appreciate that. Okay, we go on to the next one, number nine. Discussion, NACOG Transit Voucher Program. Norm?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Council. What you have before you is a memorandum of understanding for our voucher transit system agreement with NACOG. This is probably very, very familiar to you, we've been doing this very successfully with NACOG for the last seventeen-plus years. What we're here to present to you tonight is, with the new budget tentative approval on May 24th, we're here to discuss the successes and the service this current fiscal year, and actually get the contracts in place so that when we hit July 1st, we actually have a seamless transition, so that rides provided through NACOG is seamless and there's no disruption. So, that's very important. And highlights, I guess, if you look at the chart, you can see there that the particular, we used to put all the years of funding, well, the LTAF funding has been five years now. I don't think it's coming back. So, it's mentioned in the chart, but council has funded to a service level of fifty thousand dollars, which is very good to have stable funding. I know every time you hear of a, you know, funding source, it's nice to have that stable, it's not up and down, and I know NACOG has given us feedback, they really appreciate the funding, and they do give rides to people dependent on these rides that wouldn't be able to get the basic services and medical appointments in addition to some basic services without this particular service. So, this is an MOU, a memorandum of understanding to renew July 1st. As with all years, Leah Sokovich is here with NACOG, she's got a presentation to talk about the service levels this year, and a little short, short presentation to talk about the program, and request that we renew this service again for FY 1819. So, I'd like to have her come up and give her a presentation. As always, like to show you the brochures that are available in good places that people can pick it up and find information. Of course, this direction to the website for the town, and also NACOG's website of this particular information on how they can participate in the program. With that, I'll let Leah talk about the program.
Okay. It's good to see you, appreciate your being here.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members. We, NACOG really appreciates the time considered today to kind of give you an overview of the current year, starting back in July 2017 to present. So, as you can see on your current slide, we currently have six providers, and first-class taxi is typically the one that's utilized the most. And for a total, and I apologize, these totals are for, through April 1st of this year, currently we're at four thousand four hundred and forty-six rides that have been provided. Please keep in mind, we typically average around five hundred rides per month, so you'll see an additional around a thousand rides before this fiscal end of the year. Also, I just, as a note, a side note, we are currently working in discussion with Yavapai Regional Transit to possibly become a provider as well. And we're also looking into some options for purchasing gift cards for Lyft or Uber rides. Just to get with the times, they typically have lower fares, keeps the competition healthy, and just offers more options for the community. So, how are we doing? Like I mentioned, we currently provide typically an average of five hundred rides per month for Prescott Valley residents. This is less than half of the reported need. The typical primary usage deals with, as Norm alluded to, for basic needs such as grocery, pharmacy. Work-related is second, and medical needs is third. And then, of course, our following chart kind of breaks it down a little bit further. And then you can see also that's being utilized as for job search, social services, and counseling and education. And this next slide just kind of shows you the typical response from the community of what rides are requested based upon and versus the actual rides that are received to the community. So, there's always still a continuing need, and thankfully, your community is the only one in Yavapai County that provides this service. And that is, kind of concludes my report. Of course, as always, on behalf of Teridrew and all of NACOG staff, we really appreciate the town, you know, providing these services to the community. Any questions?
Questions, anyone?
I, I have some sarcasm.
No.
Excuse me, we don't have any available transportation in Prescott Valley. That's what we hear all the time.
That's what you hear, but it's definitely happening.
And I want to thank you because I know how well this is publicized, serving on the various boards in NACOG, and I, I just don't think we'll ever be able to get that message accepted in the general public, and I'm very grateful that my com, my community and this council steps to the plate.
Absolutely, we appreciate you as well.
Marty?
Yeah, I think the voucher program is a great program. My concern is, well, and you showed it on the show, and you said it in the comments, that we have twice the need and only half the product basically given. What choices, the people that cannot get a transit voucher from NACOG, what are their choices, and what is the cost to them?
There's, there's always a couple other options. If they do possibly have a vehicle or a family member that does have a vehicle, we can provide them temporary gas vouchers to assist them in getting back and forth. But as far as the particular taxi transportation vouchers with, with the funding that's currently in play, we're providing those five hundred rides per month is at capacity. However, that's one reason why we are looking into some options for Lyft and Uber. So, with the lower fares, they can obtain more rides, so hopefully that will meet the, some of that need.
Okay, one other question. You say that you have five hundred rides per month, and they're one-way rides.
Correct.
Okay, if someone calls up, has a voucher, and it takes them to the grocery store, are they guaranteed a ride back home?
Yes.
Okay.
Good. Jody?
Thank you, Mayor. Leah, you had mentioned about talking with Yavapai Regional Transit.
Yes.
Certainly, I'm thinking on the big scope.
Right.
Of what funding could be funneled through them. If we're only meeting half the need, would we be able to leverage that funding better?
And that's definitely why we are in conversations with them, and that may also alleviate some of that burden for those additional rides that need to be met.
Okay, I definitely would like to hear more about that, once you have that conversation, or even be willing to be part of it.
Okay.
Also, something that has come to my attention, visiting with Kristi Hambrik, she's the inmate services manager out of Sheriff Masher's office, and apparently with our inmate population, I didn't realize this, sometimes when our residents will get out of Camp Verdi jail, they don't have a way to get back home. There is a demand there, definitely, that they're trying to meet where possible, using some transportation grant funds, she said. But there is a real need that is documented on that, and I would like to see, and I'm not sure how we could work this all together, but number one, it's knowing that the need is there, and then figuring out a way to help with that.
Okay, thank you, thank you for that information, and we can definitely consider some options for the future that we may be able to work out. One other note I'll say is I know there's a great forthcoming with re-entry projects and programs through the prison system in Camp Verdi, and thankfully, we do have partners that are working there and assisting those folks to get ready for the workforce. And with that also comes with support services such as transportation. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mike?
Yeah, I was just trying to remember the fee structure again among your providers. Can they only charge a certain amount, or do we provide the voucher regardless of the fee charged?
They are provided a stack of vouchers per month, and I believe it's totaling a hundred and twenty dollars. And then they can contact any of the providers, and some of the fee charts may be varied, and that may be why certain providers are getting more phone calls.
Yeah.
Other than response time. So, as long as they can maintain within that hundred and twenty dollar confines, they definitely can get around.
So, that's really up to them, you know, in terms of how they manage that.
Absolutely, and sometimes they call for assistance, and we can call around for them as well.
Yeah. Do you think Yavapai Regional Transit would come under some of those fee schedules?
I believe so.
Yeah, all right, so we'll see how that goes.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Looking forward to it.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you, Mayor.
Jody?
Norm, do you remember how many years, I see we've got, what, six at fifty thousand? Do you remember beyond that by chance, what we were funding vouchers at here at the town?
I do recall there were some years that got up to at least a hundred and twenty-five thousand, others in a robust budget years that we, I think it was a twenty-five percent match that we would provide through LTAF. So, yes, there were some years, but as I say, what the challenge with that was, you'd have a hundred and twenty-five thousand, and there was years they didn't fund it. So, the town was covering that. Well, you got a hundred and twenty-five thousand down to fifty, this fifty thousand seemed to be a very good benchmark. There's always unmet need, you know, but there is a certain amount of rides met that maybe they wanted entertainment type of rides, which that could be a need that you feel like, well, it is, you know, something that can't be provided, but...
Mary?
Answer your question, yes. It had higher...
It's important to note that when the LTAF money was available for transit, and it was a special pocket that came from the Arizona Department of Transportation, pretty much all the communities in, in central Yavapai County participated in the voucher program. When those ADOT monies went away, this was the only community that stepped up and maintained the voucher program, using one hundred percent of the money going to NACOG, being general fund money.
Other questions, comments?
No, Mayor, we can bring this back to you next week for approval.
Okay with everyone?
Yep.
MOU approval.
Bring her back. Thank you so much, appreciate that. Okay, we move on into the number 10. Discussion, annual service contracts. And those, by the way, looked real good, Norm. Whoever put it together did a good job.
Thank you, Mayor. So, likewise with the annual contracts with NACOG vouchers we talked about in the last item, this particular item is for our annual maintenance and service and fuel contracts. So, the exhibit you see above you are really the synopsis of everything we do. We come to you every time this year to renew some of our outsourced contracts, they provide great service. We've got longstanding relationships with many of these vendors that they seem renewed, we do bid them every five years, but we do look for renewals every year. Important thing to note this year with our service contracts renewals, of the ones that we could renew with our zero-based budget this year of no operation increase, we asked our vendors the same thing. Can you do the same amount of service level and just renew your contract, basically for the same price we had this current fiscal year? All of them came back and said, yes, we can. So, this is basically just doing the same thing again next year for many of these renewal contracts. Looking at the, the council action here, janitorial, just to move through them real quick, fourth year of an extension, Clean Team Janitorial claims our three buildings here, does a great job. You know, I always comment, they're one of our longstanding ten-plus-year contractors. When I go back tonight, you know, put away my stuff, I'll say hello to Tyrone, he's been here long as I have, so always nice to see familiar faces, but it is an outsourced contract, longstanding relationships. Mowing services, street striping, very simply, those are Public Works services that we're very happy that we have outsourced because we don't have to keep the equipment and inventory, takes a few weeks a year to do each one of these services, but we're very happy to have local vendors perform this service and to do a very high level of service level and with their trained professional staff. And street sweeping is very, very similar. We don't have to keep that equipment locally because we do sweep four times a year of the curbed areas of Prescott Valley. Likewise with, with mowing, we, as an outsourced service, we manage through Public Works. So, each one of those particular contracts is zero-based, and we would like to renew again for next year and have a seamless transition when we start July 1st with the new budget. The one service contract I did want to bring up was the fuel service contract. That was one that had reached its limit for a five-year ability to renew, so we went out for bid again for the fuel services. We spend about two hundred thousand dollars a year on fuel for all the town fleet. It is administered through Public Works for all the various departments for the particular fleet and fuel services. So, we did go out to bid, and there was a change of vendor this year. Actually, with Cardlock Fuel Systems or SC Fuels, they actually were the low bidder, and we did have Bennett Oil the last five years, and we are still confident with SC Fuels with their bid. They actually had the contract before Bennett for the five years previous to that. So, we look for seamless service change, and SC Fuels does have separate stations, but the advantage is we used them five years ago. Roberts Markets, their main source, this has got twenty-nine pumps there, I'm very confident they can keep up with service levels for us just about any time of the day and night. And likewise, in the Great Vine Industrial, they have a pumping station there. So, great service, looking forward to having them be our vendor for the next five years, and they've proven their service levels, if they do the same they did five years ago, they'll be a very good service level, provide fuel for all of our service fleet. So, that one is a particular new contract that was bid per the contract requirements, and we'll move forward with council's recommendation and approval to award a new contract with them and do the big transition, starting new fiscal year, starting July 1st. With that, any questions I can answer about our annual service contracts?
Questions, anyone? Laurel?
I, I'm going to think that the services for custodial service for the police department are for the existing building and not the addition. And so, we, we had to repair ourselves that that will be larger once we include that addition.
Correct.
But I, I didn't actually know when we hoped to have that completed. Would we have to deal with an amendment to the custodial contract in this coming year?
We will, when that particular comes up. That's part of the amendment.
Logical.
We'll pay them when they do the work. It's actually part of zero increase in the, in the square footage fee they have.
Right.
But it'd be a part of the approval that when that building is done and needs to be cleaned.
Yeah.
And it's actually been put into the budget and anticipated, so the police budget has that anticipated cost in for janitorial services for that new addition. Good, good question.
That's what I wanted.
Any other questions? Mike?
Yeah, just wondering on the striping and pavement, that's only, that's done in conjunction with your chip seal, I would assume.
Well, candid, chip seal streets is, that's part of the service that's provided, is part of chip seal.
Right.
But keep in mind, we only do about twenty percent of our streets.
Right.
So, the other striped streets that receive no chip seals, we have to maintain and refresh that pavement markings every year.
So, that's where that's going every year?
Right, that's where we do that every year. Takes about two and a half, three weeks, and they usually get started around July and are completed in around August 15th or September 1st was their cadence this year. And throughout the year, we, as I use the term tune-up, what needs to be refreshed in some other areas.
Good. Any other, Laura, did you have comments? Good. All right, did you have comments? Jody, did you?
Very good. We'll bring it back next week and get them on board so they can start July 1st again with seamless service.
You've done a good job with this again. Okay, let's go on to number 11, discussion, annual material contracts. Norm?
Yes, Mayor, Council, this particular council action is a little different, that we do bid all our material contracts yearly. So it's new competition. We don't particularly just renew with the same vendor. So there is competition here, and especially when you get commodities like you see here with what we, a lot of the commodities we use in Public Works. It's interesting to note, when you see the fuel go up, certainly asphalt goes up. So when we buy asphaltic products, we've been seeing about a 50% increase. So with the yearly renewals, we're right up to the current market rate, whatever that is. And we do receive good competition from all our local vendors. They do want and appreciate the business we do with them. So we do see good competition for all these particular commodities. I'd like to go through some of them just to give you some highlights. Roadway material, as you can see there, we have a couple of local vendors that we buy asphalt products from. And it's, I think, important to note that we spend around $400,000 a year just buying asphalt to maintain our streets. And we've got good competition. In fact, we can use both of these suppliers depending if one's busy or not or which particular one was lower. But great competition there. So we get a low price and it's great to have local competition in order to purchase the asphaltic materials. This next one, asphalt paving, this is really, in the last couple of years, I think council's aware when we presented to you on the pre-chip maintenance, that this year's program, basically $2 million, it splits out 800,000 in chip seal, but actually 1.2 million in edge patching and/or other services that our own in-house crews do. Well, this particular item for asphalt paving, as you can see there, this is an $869,000 item. We'll spend every bit of that with local earth resources corporation doing that edge patching. We talked to prep the streets the first year for chip seal the following year. So this is that annually bid contract. And you can see there is very good competition there. All these local vendors have worked for us in the past, and they really sharpen their pencil and want that work. So great competition there for the award of a, you know, basically $869,000 contract. And do like to say, that is a, the workmanship that each one of these particular contractors provides, that's why you get that great-looking service you see in addition to our streets work. The craftsmen out there in the contracting world locally do a very good job on the edge patching. It's, I'm always very impressed with the work they do throughout that pre-chip maintenance. So this is where we award this yearly and a great, good contract to have. Next one is the annual street and park concrete. This one is when we have sidewalk panels that freak out all of a sudden with subgrade, we're able to go out and do some spot replacements. In addition, the parks department's able to use these competitively bid items. We spend about $50,000 a year. And you can see the competition there. Actually, we had a new player in town with Brothers Grading and Escavating. It's been historically asphalt paving supply have been awarded that project. But Brothers Grading did come in at the low bid, so we'll look forward to awarding a contract to them and working with them to repair any concrete repairs we have throughout the town in our right-of-bays and in parks. Last one, CMP culverts, pretty simple. We look to that schedule of values when we need to buy culvert throughout our drainage maintenance throughout the town. So we use that particular contract. And last, solid waste and the portable toilets, that's used throughout for, just as you see there, those particular services as we provided there. That's the annual bid materials and some of those service contracts. Happened to answer any questions you may have about this, but important thing to point out, longstanding relationships, local vendors, they service very, very well, gave us great service, and can't say enough about how they augment our staff and service to our residents.
Mary, you got a comment?
I just wanted to extend my thanks to all of these partners that we have and for how they work with us, you know, and when things get a little rough, we're still there together, making things work for the best of the community. And I just want to acknowledge them and tell them how much appreciated and what they do for the people.
You know, Councilwoman Mallory, that's always important, as I say, these people live here. They take as much pride in the work they do and the craftsmanship as what our own town staff does. I always like to point out, they're here to stay and they're proud of that work they do. And they do show it in the quality of work they do.
They do. Thank you, Norm.
Does this sound okay to everyone?
Very good, Mayor. We'll bring it back next week.
Bring her back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we go on to the next one, discussion, town engineer agreement. And I think Boyd is back up.
How come you get the shortest one, Boyd?
I'm not sure why that always happens. Mayor, council members, thank you once again. I'm here for my biannual visit to discuss renewal of our town engineering agreement with Davin Associates. We've been doing this myself for, I think this is my fifth trip over 10 years to discuss this. And I'm sure you're well aware that other than Larry, I think Gordon and Bob back there have been involved with engineering here at the town for longer than anybody else in the engineering department. This will be, I believe, 30 years that they've been doing the town engineer work for us. He's not that old? Which one?
Which one? Boy.
So basically, just to hit the highlights, as I said, it's a biannual renewal, which is coming due at the end of this month. So we would renew, once again, that would carry us through June 30th of 2020. Davin Associates is maintaining their discounted hourly rate of $60 an hour for the first, what is it?
10 hours?
10 hours. And then they will be beyond that. It would be the rate that they have agreed to, which is 25% below their standard rate and still significantly below local and national averages for expenses. So that's basically the extent of all I have to present to you. Gordon and Bob, would you guys at least please stand if you'd like to come up and say a few words? You're welcome to.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, I do hope this is the last item on your agenda.
You didn't know that? We do have one more item on the agenda.
One more, okay.
Always.
Boy got the short end of that stick, having to do a little sandwich there.
That's the short end.
Beginning and the end, so anyways. We just wanted to, again, state how much we appreciate working with the town of Prescott Valley and working with the staff of Prescott Valley. Couldn't have a better gig if I wanted one. And so this is great stuff, and we're always happy to help out. And we enjoy building things, as you all know. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Bob, any comments?
Only to say that 30 years is, I'm very proud of it. And it's been a pleasure serving the town and staff. And I think what makes it so much fun for us is all the professionalism from everybody. And so thank you.
Good, thank you. Any else?
Just one final note from me, just to let you all know, we do communicate and converse with them some weeks on a daily basis. But at least every other day, they're there to help support us in making decisions and reviewing documents and engineering plans, survey documentation for us. So they're very much a valuable resource for us.
Wait, Laura?
I just want to say, having been around so long, I wish all our contracts and all our relationships were as beneficial as this one is. Don't think that we're not aware of the effort and the quality that you've provided for us for a very long time. So I think the sentiments are mutual both ways. And Larry had something.
Oh, Larry, you got a comment?
Yeah, I mean, Mayor and Council, I've been around for 29 of those 30 years. That Davin Associates has been the town engineering firm. And just a couple of comments. Number one, the very, very high-quality service that we get from Davin Associates. Number two, nobody's perfect. And when mistakes are made, they're owned up to, they're remediated without asking for additional dollars. That is absolutely the level of integrity that this firm has extended to the town of Prescott Valley. And as a result, staff feels very confident that we will continue to get outstanding service from this firm and the individuals associated with it. So we're very fortunate.
Everybody agree?
Yes.
Bring her back, Boyd.
We'll bring it back next week.
Hey, gentlemen, thank you so much. Appreciate that. Keep up the good work. We have one more item, and that's the shortest of all. That's adjournment. Meeting is adjourned.
Chairman Skug?
We're here.
President here, something or another.
We're in.
Vice Chairman, I, here. Board Member Anderson?
Are we not here?
I'm in.
Board Member Grossman?
Still here.
Board Member Mallory?